I'd like to call to order the City of Battle Creek, Michigan, and the Battle Creek City Commission Meeting for November eighteenth at seven o'clock. Matter of fact, it's seven oh one. We want to thank everyone here tonight. We have the Youth Challenge Academy. I'm glad to see each and every one of you. We have five individuals from Post Franklin Neighborhood that are going to receive a special award, and we have people from a organization up in Lansing dealing with affordable water, and we're going to be hearing from their comments at the end of the meeting during public comments. So, we have a lot to do. The agenda's probably about an hour and a half long. Just kidding. It's only, there's only one resolution. So, we thank you, thank everyone for being here tonight, and we're going to start with the moment of silence or invocation, then we'll have a pledge allegiance led by Commissioner Chris Simmons. Would you please stand if you can? Commissioner Chris Simmons?
I pledge allegiance to the flag, united States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next item on our agenda is our roll call. Madam Clerk, when you're ready.
Commissioner Kottarski Smith, Commissioner LaCoss.
Present.
Commissioner Lance.
Here.
Commissioner Morris.
Here.
Mayor Benke.
Here.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Here.
Commissioner Reynolds.
Present.
Commissioner Simmons.
Here.
And Vice Mayor Sophia.
Here.
Thank you.
And Commissioner Smith is traveling this week. So, first of all, we're going to start off with our beautiful Battle Creek Awards, and Commissioner Reynolds is going to help me with those. And who is reading off the... Ted? Thank you.
Yep, I've got them here. If you'd like me to, Amanda, I can read those.
That's fine.
Yeah, certainly. Okay, so we've got some nominations this evening from NPC One. Award three nomination for Trinity Lutheran Church at two zero five five East Columbia Avenue.
Do we have anyone here from... Yes, we do. Thank you.
We have an NPC ten, award one nomination for Lori Diane Gessen at twenty-eight North Twenty-sixth Street. Have an NPC ten, award one nomination for Judith and Randy Bishop at thirty-one North Twenty-sixth Street. And then finally, NPC eleven, award four nomination for Matthew Goy at two twenty-one North Morland Drive.
Well, thank you very much. First of all, Ellis Cutler and his wife are here representing the church. A friend. Okay, I'm sorry. A property manager. I'm very sorry. I'm very sorry. Then Lori Geeson's here, and we have another one. Lori, here you go. Thank you. We want to thank everyone for their efforts at improving their property, making Battle Creek look better. Just yesterday, I was at the corner of Chestnut and Calhoun Street, and there was a property owner that shared with me, just because he's doing things, putting in a new fence, his neighbor had to go out and buy the same exact fence. So, those things really do make our community better. So, we want to say thank you, and if we could have a group photo taken right here, we'd really appreciate it. All right, Ted. Is there any more?
That was it for beautiful Battle Creek Awards.
All right, now, we would like to ask the gentlemen up that took their time this summer to improve Post Franklin by cutting grass, picking up trash, and doing all sorts of things. Can you come up for a photo? I'm going to have to borrow Jim's so I can read it. This is a unique presentation. We've never had a volunteer group so dedicated in the Post Franklin area that really helped improve what is taking place up there. And I know there's a lot of people that are working hard in the Post Franklin area. There's one lady that's quite elderly that picks up trash several times every day, and we had a presentation for her not too long ago. This is a unique operation. I volunteered to meet them next summer and spend some time with them to clean up a portion. Maybe they're going to expand the area. Right now, I think they're doing a four to five block area of Post Franklin, and we just want to say thank you to them. Your efforts make our city a better place for all neighbors. These individuals dedicate their time and service to clean up, improve, and overall appearance of a three-block area of Post Franklin in the Franklin neighborhood. In addition to mowing, they move trash and small debris in the area, beautifying its appearance, and increasing safety for others. We thank these individuals for their dedication and commitment to our Battle Creek community. A single act of kindness throws out roots in all directions, and roots spring up and make new trees. And we just want to say thank you. We appreciate it, and sometimes people do these things, and we never know about them, but we want to do something special by letting more people know about it. Thanks again, men. Next item on our agenda is a presentation. I'm going to turn over to your city manager.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor and Commission. This evening, we have a presentation concerning the LDDA Development TIF Plan. Eric Keeholz, Senior Planner with Progressive, is here to walk us through that. If you'll recall, we had on the, potentially on the agenda a month or so ago, information about the LDDA and TIF Plan. This is a good opportunity for us to review the things that we did in the Beckley Road Study and information for that TIF.
All right. Good evening, Commissioners. Thanks for the opportunity to present about this plan. Just wanted to talk through a little bit of the planning process, what went into this plan, and what are some of the outcomes. So, just to give you a snapshot of kind of a synopsis of what we're kind of trying to work with in the LDDA. If I lived in Mingus Creek Village, I could walk to Target. It's only a half mile away. That's the same distance as here to New Holland. So, it's actually relatively close. But the way that we designed this area in the eighties, there's over two thousand feet of surface parking in between, two hundred feet of road, a hundred and fifty feet of grass, and no sidewalks. So, when this place was designed in the nineteen eighties, it was designed, really, walking and biking and anything like that were an afterthought. It was designed just for cars, and the reality of that is that we have now over three times the amount of surface parking that is required in the LDDA. So, there's a ton of parking, a ton of asphalt that's not really being utilized. There's a lot of people that live there. It's really one of the most dense neighborhoods in the city, believe it or not. And there's a lot of people there, a lot of opportunity there, but there really isn't, it's really not designed for people to live in a way that's fully utilizing the land. So, what happens with this plan is that it's actually the outcome of the sub-area plan and the master plan amendment that went in for the Beckley Road Corridor. As part of that planning process, we were able to get in touch with over three thousand community members. Two thousand of them responded to a digital survey or provided comments through the city's email address or through the Facebook page. We had six focus group interviews with a couple dozen different stakeholders in the area on housing, on transportation and mobility, some other topics. We talked with the county, we talked with local neighboring townships. We had virtual Q and A's online, we had three pop-up events, two open houses, and one walking audit, which was actually quite a bit of fun. We did a walk of the area to figure out what it felt like to be walking on foot in the neighborhood. So, this is really, the DDA and TIF Plan is really the outcome of the planning process that went into this. And you are all familiar with where we came from in this area. There was a lot of opposition from the get-go when the mall was being built in the eighties. The DNR actually was opposed because of the water, which we'll show a little bit. But the point of this is really that it was built very quickly and without much planning. So, there's, that's why over there now, there's handful of private roads that are really in poor shape, that are owned by people that really, it's tough to get a hold of. There's a lot of just sprawl and just kind of people, things aren't really joined together very well. So, we're trying to kind of course correct from that boom that happened in the early eighties, but now, a lot of the infrastructure is reaching its useful end of life. Okay? So, there's unmaintained private roads, really difficult to walk or bike, even though there's a ton of people that live in this area. There's over three thousand people that live just in this small neighborhood. So, it really is one of the densest places in Battle Creek. Aging retail, there's no public space, so there's really, besides the linear trail and the cemetery, no space is owned by a public entity, which makes it kind of lack that neighborhood quality. There is the library there, which is something that we could talk about. But flooding is a challenge. We found over half a dozen retention ponds. We don't know quite who's responsible for maintaining them. A lot of them have water in them when they're actually designed to be empty, except for when it's flooding. So, there's a concern about flooding in the area and the fact that that might be continuing to increase. In the mall itself, the outlots are performing. You're seeing some of the new construction on the outlots that are happening outside of the mall. Some of the anchor stores are still there. That's pretty strong, but in the mall, it's about seventy percent interior vacancy. And then, like I said, three times the amount of surface parking that's required is in the area. Really quick about flooding. So, over the last couple decades, you can see in the, on that image, our region is one of the most, it's one of the wettest places in the country. So, when you think about the changing climate, the fact that there's wildfire fires and hurricanes elsewhere in the country, relatively safe in Michigan, but the one thing that is changing and that it poses a threat is the amount of precipitation that we get. So, the amount of flooding is going up, but also these like deluges that kind of come out of nowhere, those are increasing too, and they're projected to continue to increase. So, that's something that we're thinking about when we're trying to design the infrastructure in the LDDA. And we have a creek there, we have some retention ponds, and we have a bunch of surface parking where all the water just runs into the creek or runs into the road. How do we plan for the next, you know, twenty, thirty, forty years in a way that is going to be responsive to the water that's kind of increasing? So, we want to, we want to protect safety of people that live there. We want to protect the property values that are there as well. There are a lot of really good strengths. So, when, the first time I walked through the LDDA, it was almost, it was probably about two years ago now, and I immediately saw the linear trail, which is a great strength that it has. You know, the creek, the nature and the water that's there. You don't really see that very often in a place that was built in the eighties like that, but it's there, and it's something that we should really utilize. Like I said, it's one of the densest population neighborhoods in the area, has the busiest bus route, so the Capitol Avenue bus route is the busiest one. Strong retail options, so the fact that you have the Beckley Road Corridor, that's actually doing really well as far as retail goes. And then existing infrastructure, so thinking about ways that we can reuse the streets and the sewers and the water systems that are already there and make them more beneficial to the community. So, there's, it is a younger, denser neighborhood. We projected demand for over five hundred housing units in the area, and that could actually support existing retail. So, if you think about adding a thousand people to that neighborhood, that just adds demand for the more commercial areas and add existing retail. Out of the engagement, there's really three main themes. So, place-making, green infrastructure, and reducing car dependence. Place-making is really, we're going to talk through this a little bit here, but place-making is really just fostering places that people want to stay. So, you might not necessarily be able to walk or bike to the corridor, but once you get there, ideally, you could park your car once and maybe walk around, cross the street a little safer, walk to places, walk to Horrocks, then walk across the street ideally. Green infrastructure, we want to enhance the environmental sustainability, so making sure that we create places that are attractive and really nice places to be, but that can also serve the purpose of protecting flooding and protecting our creek. We looked at three areas specifically as far as where we could look at redevelopment. So, the Mingus Creek Mall site, Lakeview Square Mall, and then number three is North Capitol Avenue, but we also included relaxing some zoning restrictions so that you could build more apartments where the existing apartments are. And this might have got buried in the plan, but we actually did a fiscal analysis of the area. So, we took the city's budget, and we figured out what it costs to have single-family houses and what it costs to serve those single-family houses. We took what it costs to have a multifamily building, and we took, analyzed how much it costs to actually serve that building. And then we looked at revenues, and what we showed is that for all of these developments, we're actually showing a net revenue of seventy grand at the Mingus Creek Mall site, sixty-five grand if we are able to increase infill, and then ten thousand net revenue at the, at the mall, along with twelve acres of new park space. The reason for that increase is because the city's already servicing these areas, right? There's water, sewer, there's trash pickup, there's police, but what we're doing is adding density to increase the amount of revenue that's coming in. So, the amount of operation services go up slightly, but the amount of revenue goes up quite a bit more. Let's talk about the Sears site. It's been, it's been for sale for quite a bit now, vacant for quite some time. Something that hasn't really been discussed too much is that it sits in a flood zone. That makes redevelopment very difficult because of flood insurance requirements and the potential risk on behalf of somebody who's going to try to buy the site. It's possible for these maps to be redrawn, so there could be an avenue for FEMA to redraw the map because those, if you see the blue line, that's where the creek used to be, right? And now, the creek is under, underground and going around the site. But this is just an important note because the FEMA site makes it a little dangerous or risky for someone to acquire the Sears and do something with it when you're involving lenders and flood insurance and that sort of thing. So, it poses a challenge to redeveloping that site. What we're showing in the plan is that we daylight the creek. So, it's a pretty bold goal. It's exciting, but what we're seeing is that that can have some really cool side effects. Obviously, you would have public park space and a new creek that you'd have access to, but it actually has been shown in other communities to spur redevelopment and actually boost surrounding property values. So, this is a really good example in Connecticut. This was a mall that was built over a creek. The creek got put in a ditch and circled around the mall. Flooding in the nineties brought twenty-six million dollars in damage and ended up closing the mall. What happened was that it was acquired, and then between the state, basically their version of Eagle, the EPA, the local funds, they assisted in cleaning up and redeveloping the park. And what happened at the bottom there, you can see, it spurred redevelopment of a hundred and seventy units and twenty thousand square feet of retail in the surrounding area while also removing properties from the flood map. So, super beneficial. Having that public amenity is starting, would make other sites around it more attractive is really what we're, what we're showing there. The other one is looking at, there's, there's room for over five hundred units just south by the Target. So, if you can put a little neighborhood there, that would generate seventy thousand dollars in net revenue after you factor in expenses. A little bit more difficult because there's quite a few private developer, private owners on that lot, so it's a little bit more negotiation and back and forth with the private developers. But we're showing in this plan that it's definitely possible and feasible on this, on the site. And then one of the other main things, we had a really great conversation with BCATs as part of this process. They were on, Jeff Franklin was on our steering committee, and they were really excited about some of the road changes that we were showing. So, you could see some of the amenities on the right there, just improving the bus stop, having wayfinding of the trail, so showing people, hey, that Taco Bell over there, there's actually a linear park there. You should go check it out. And not keep it a secret, really try to emphasize that. The thing on the left there is showing what we could do with Glen Cross. So, Glen Cross is an enormous road that really gets maybe five hundred cars a day. It's kind of the southern part of, of that area. There's no sidewalks, but there's apartments all around it, so there's really nowhere for people to walk, even though there's over three thousand people that live there. So, what we could do is really just take it, it's very easy to take that from four lanes to two and then have pedestrian trails and biking trails on either side. So, that was another thing that BCATs was very excited about and supportive of. This shows the different projects that we estimated in the LDDA plan. The DDA has about a one million dollar budget is what it was projecting in the plan. That is a mix of, so just as a reminder, I'm sure you guys are familiar with this, but there's no new taxes as part of this. What happens is it gets diverted from the city, the county, and the, and Kellogg Community College into the LDDA's budget. So, once the DDA is able to start to generate a million dollars in revenue, you're able to bond against that potentially and increase some of the, some of the changes that are happening in that area. Goes through some of the other ones as well here. So, that's kind of the DDA and TIF plan in a nutshell. I'm happy to answer any questions or talk through it some more.
Well, not a question, but I just wanted to, Glen Cross Road was built back when they were flush with money, and there were, like you said, there were no housing. So, they labeled that road the road to nowhere. It was Gary Dodd, who was one of the leaders of the NPC on the south side of Battle Creek, and he was a creek, a frequent critic of TIF money.
Okay.
All right, Chris.
So, good to see you, Eric.
Yeah, you too.
I actually served on the subcommittee that helped develop this plan, and it's a great process, and you're right, we engaged a lot of folks on it. What my, where I'm, I guess I have a little bit of a disconnect is with this plan, which I, I build as like a master plan, like the city has a master plan, to then putting in motion to implement this LDDA TIF capture with a significant amount of money. And I just have that disconnect. Like, okay, when did we as a body go through this plan and say, we like this, not so much this, or, I mean, these are all, some of them are great, some of them, I think, not so great.
Right.
But, you know, that was part of the, the process to make the plan. So, I guess it, my question would be, what is, what is our next step? And this would be towards city administration, to get public input from elected officials to say, this looks good, this looks good. You know, the, the park at Sears, I understand everything about the water. I'm glad you're moving the bus stop. I'm glad you're moving the bus stop from the flood zone by Taco Bell, out of that. So those kind of public infrastructure things, Glen Cross, I think are, have some merit to it. I'm a little less, I'm a little more leery of like the placemaking kind of stuff. There's a lot of great things you mentioned, development happening at the mall, Horrocks and the new outlaw restaurants, like, do we just step back and let this happen naturally? Which is, that's kind of where I am as far as, I think we need some engagement.
Yeah.
I think there is merit to moving forward. Yes, most people ask, "What do you want to see on Beckley Road?" They want the, the dang lights timed properly to turn, turn in and out of these places.
Yeah.
We haven't talked about that. I mean, if I'm gonna, I'm gonna bond out some money, let's, let's fix the, the traffic flow.
Yep.
So what is our next step in the process and how do we say, "Okay, this is what we'd like to do moving forward," and there's merit to some of these public infrastructure kind of things, maybe not so much on other parts.
So I think that you probably have a couple of options. If this body would want to look at the, the projects that have been laid out and rank them on what you would like to see, we can certainly do that. I know the LDDA, there's, they've approved commissioners for the board, so there will be representation from this body on that body.
Thank you.
So if you want to appoint someone to that position and then have the LDDA board, then take those projects and make decisions on what they would like to move forward with, we can also do that. I don't know if Mr. Dearing has anything additional to add to that or if I'm missing something.
Yeah, it, it, it is a process, right? And, you know, we're trying to, we're trying to do our best to, you know, maintain the integrity of the initial study process, right? Which there was an extensive amount of community engagement, and this is what came out of it, what Eric has introduced this evening. And then that was translated into a development TIF plan. So we, what we don't want to do, from a staff perspective, right, is to walk away from what we learned from a community engagement around what folks wanted to see out there in, in the final plan. But we also recommend, or, you know, certainly recognize that ultimately the LDDA board has to make decisions about where to invest the money based on this plan or other opportunities that may come up. And that ultimately the city commission approves their budget on an annual basis, right? And so I think there are some built-in controls there if the commission feels like, this isn't really going the direction that we're comfortable with, without necessarily having to, again, compromise the plan as it was put together based on the amount of engagement that went into it. So I think there are some checks and balances there that could work. And this idea obviously of having an elected representative from the commission on the LDDA board, along with property owners who aren't there right now, and some other reconfiguration that we need to do, hopefully we'll, we'll kind of bring all that in line with where those that are in the decision-making positions can feel comfortable about the plan moving forward.
And if I just may, to that, to that point, thank you. That's one of the things that I, I pushed for when this, when we first started the ball rolling on this plan, I'm like, LDDA was really kind of defunct, there was no board. I'm like, who's going to actually administer this? And there was no public representative. Like we have commission representatives on the DDA board, we might be ex officio, but we're there and we're, we're part of that, part of that process. Thank you for that, thank you for hearing us on that. And yes, checks and balances, but we all know sometimes we set these things in motion and they take on a life of their own and they're hard to, hard to go. And this is a very large commitment with bonding out a lot of millions of dollars over many decades that we just need to make sure we do our due diligence. Thank you.
Thank you, Chris, and thank you, and Amanda, and Ted Dearing. Appreciate it. Any other comments by the commission? Patrick, go ahead.
Oh, thank you, Mayor. Just a question, how do these projects get prioritized? Because like, the first one shows high and then everyone else is medium and low.
That was in the discussion with the, with, through the steering committee, but also with the LDDA.
Okay.
So really with, a lot of times with DDA plans, and I think, you know, the city manager is correct, that ultimately you all can send it back to the LDDA and say, "We don't feel comfortable with these projects." Typically with DDA plans, we do try to write them with flexibility because as part of the public act, you know, you want to have that flexibility to be able to carry all these activities and be able to continue the plan moving forward. So there is a little bit of flexibility that's, you know, kind of added to the, to the, to the projects. So the, the Lynchpin project really is that public park space, and that's why that was a high priority, because we saw that's one that is achievable, you know, because it has, it's vacant and it's, it's up for sale. And if you're able to kind of build momentum with that, some of these other things would flow from there.
Okay. I was just wondering if it came from public comment or something like, how it was developed and that type of questions is what I had, but I, I would change the order of a few of these if I had a choice myself, but thank you for all the research and work that you did.
Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you, Patrick. All right, that concludes, got one more? Commissioner LaCoss.
Thank you. I just wanted to talk about placemaking, Commissioner Simmons had brought it up. I've been taking some housing and financing courses, and one of the big things they talked about is, back in the day, people used to move from community to community based on jobs. And, you know, to go along with our workshop on the housing situation, a lot of times now, people aren't necessarily moving for jobs, but they're moving for communities. And, you know, to be in a community that they like, and then they will find a job that, you know, fits that need. So having those placemaking or third places is so important, you know, think along the lines of back in the day when you had a mall that people would go to, or, you know, the American Legion or a church, somewhere else besides your home or employment where people would meet. And it was kind of like another place that you felt at home at and could connect with people. So I think that, that was kind of one of the biggest things they said, you know, to kind of bring people in.
Thank you, Commissioner. Any other commission comments? Seeing none, this concludes our presentation. Thank you.
Thank you all.
Next item on our agenda is chair noting any added or deleted resolutions?
There were none.
Thank you. Next item on our agenda is petitions, communications, and reports.
There were none.
Thank you very much. Next item on our agenda is public comment regarding any remaining agenda items. If you'd like to make public comment regarding any remaining agenda item, please raise your hand, and we will acknowledge you to come forward to the podium. You'll have four minutes to make your comments. Please state your name and address before beginning your comment and indicate which agenda item you are speaking to. Are there any public comments at this time? Yes, David, and then we'll go to Joe Harris.
I'm talking about West, West Resolutions 273, the four-year term candidates. Do I talk about that now or?
Yes, you can.
Okay. I'm getting, I'm for the two-year term. I think four years is going to be too long. No, you put a person in for four years, that's a long time. You get a candidate that runs for an office, you don't know if she's a Democrat or a Republican, as I'm nominational, a conservative or liberal, you know nothing about them, you vote for somebody you don't even know, and you're going to turn around and vote them for four years. Imagine, four years. Now we got a two-year. If they get elected in, if they don't do a good job or not happy with that person, we got opportunity to get them out. Or otherwise, they could be in there forever, may not ever get them out of there. So I think we should, um, keep a two-year term till we know the candidate. If we have more information, like I go and vote, I want to know who I'm voting for, know something about him. But I'm going to vote for somebody for four years, I want to know something about him. I think we should stay at a two-year term like we have now. It worked out well, just, if they do a good job, it should be re-elected in two years. I just, I can't see a sport, a four-year term. I think we should stay about like we work.
Thank you, David. Joe?
Joe Harris, Battle Creek, I'm also talking about Resolution 273. First of all, I want to thank you all for amending it from what it originally was. I appreciate the fact that you took out the commission discipline section for the simple fact that, as I said last time, there's already things in place via state law. And again, if, if that becomes an issue, I would encourage you guys come up with a process, so as to appeal to the governor and then go on from there. So that's enough about that. But in regard to the terms, so here's my stance on it. I, I agree with the two-year term just because of what the gentleman before me said, but at the same time, I can also see the four-year term in that it allows for you guys to work on larger projects and bigger projects. But here's where I'm going to preface. Longer terms encourage what I like to call lifetime politicians, not that any of you are going to do that, but it does to an extent. So I, I would, it's just me, if you're going to do a four-year term, consider, consider some kind of a term limit. Maybe, you know, a, a term limit of that you can't serve more than, you know, three, four-year terms and move on. And the reason why I say that is, is it allows for other people to come in, maybe, that have other thoughts, something to that effect. And, you know, four years is a long time. I mean, I'll kind of look at Congress that we have, we have one side that has two-year terms, we have another side that has six-year terms. I know we can't do that here, but there's advantage to the two-year terms and then if you don't like the one representative, that, that you feel like they're not representing you, they can get out. It's harder for a senator, I mean, it is. But just consider maybe term limits just to kind of balance things out a little bit. That's just my thought process on that. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Joe. Any other public comments? Kathy? Then we'll go to Reese.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Hello, commissioners and staff. I too am speaking on Resolution 273. I was a little bit unaware of it because you may have noticed I wasn't at the last commission meeting, maybe you didn't. I am a little concerned regarding the change from what I understand to be two-year terms to four-year terms. Can I ask a question? Is that accurate? What is partly in here? I can't ask, never mind. Okay. I do believe that there is a significant benefit for us having our commissioners every two years re-elected. I do recognize that there is some cost involved in that, and that may be a consideration both personally for the candidates as well as for the city to run the elections. However, I do believe that the freshness of every two years is something that keeps people hopping, shall we say? And, and I appreciate that very much. I also agree with our last speaker that I know there currently is a term limitation to the commissioners. However, I would like to see that expanded a bit, as in perhaps more than just a year off the commission, perhaps making that a longer term, or even, no, just making it a longer term. But for the most part, I have also spoken, and I really wasn't going to speak about this issue, but I got a whole pile of phone calls and texts today, and, a whole pile, how many is that? 12? And every single person said that they were not in favor of elongating the terms for the city commissioners. So I just wanted to report that back. Thank you very much.
Thank you. We can go to Reese, and then we'll go to Mary.
Good evening, Reese Atkins, 84 South 23rd Street. I also, I am in favor of going to a four-year term, but I also, like the other two speakers, would like to see a timed term limit where if you do run, you can only run for maybe two, four-year terms, and then you have to step away. That way it gives more people the ability to run, gives more ability of people to come up there, and we ain't got the same person in the same order at large, we can get a variety of different people up there. Thank you.
Thank you, Reese. Mary?
Hi, um, nice to meet you, city manager and the commissioners. And I've watched term limits come and go, and not in favor of them because it diminishes your pool of trained candidates. You spend years paying people, training them to do a very intelligent job, and then you tell them they can't do it anymore because they've been doing it for 12 years, which sometimes is silly. As far as the four-year, I actually think it would be a huge improvement in your ability to get things done. Two years, you're one year in and you're running for office, and that's why it's so frustrating with representatives, they just don't have enough time to get real work done. That four years would let you do, and you guys aren't like half the state, big thing, you guys are real small. This is just Battle Creek. So we don't have a big population of bodies that have the mental ability to do what you do, even though everybody has an opinion about it. And we need to be able to have you guys keep doing this. We spend a lot of money training you, whether we recognize this or not. You really are a trained, intelligent force, and we need to help promote that. And competition, you know, is nice, but not always in this capacity. You know, this isn't a sports team. This is really government, and it's not a competition, it's collaborative. And so that's kind of my opinion on this, but I want to talk about some else later, so.
All right, Mary, thank you. Any other public comment at this time? Seeing none, we'll move on to our next commission comment regarding meeting business.
Moved to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Moved and supported to approve the consent agenda. Is there any item that a commissioner would like to have removed, discussed, clarified? Seeing none, would you please vote on the consent agenda?
It never popped up on my screen. Yeah, I voted.
It came up a little bit late, but it came up.
That consent agenda has been approved. Next item on our agenda is, yes?
I think that somebody's missing.
It's not showing.
Yeah.
The mayor's not on there, but I have him as yes. See, I'm not showing.
It's not on the screen.
I vote yes. I don't think, I don't see me.
Put me down as yes.
Here we go.
Do we need to take a break?
No, it's.
No?
It's lagging for some reason.
Okay, so you'll, the record's eight to zero, right?
Yes.
Okay, let the record show that that passed eight to zero. Next item on our agenda is Resolution 273. Madam clerk, when you're ready.
If approved, this resolution would allow for the submission to the electorate, the proposed amendments to the City of Battle Creek Charter to set terms of office for all elected officials of the City of Battle Creek to four years, and have those terms begin at an organizational meeting of the city commission to be held the first Tuesday in December after the election.
Moved to approve Resolution 273.
Second.
So moved and supported to approve Resolution 273. Are there any comments from the commission? Commissioner O'Donnell, then Commissioner Simmons?
Thank you, Mayor. Just a few legal questions on this. We know we discussed it in the last time, and we, so if a commissioner is convicted of a felony, what would, what would have to take place? Would we stop to petition the governor, or would they be removed from their seat immediately?
That's a, that's a question that there's, there are multiple ways in which that situation could be addressed.
The other question that I have is same with someone moving away. I don't, I don't mind the discipline part, we took that out, but I, I just have a feeling that we should have something like in there, because if somebody was convicted of a felony, they could hold up a, a person to be appointed for quite some time while we got paperwork to deal with. Same with if somebody moved away and not really resigned, they just backed up and left the seat open, till we have to petition the governor. I just wanted to know what would take place.
I think that's a situation that, you know, that could be addressed when, if, if it were to occur. The 273, those, the provision, the broad provisions were removed from the previous version for 273 here. I think that's a situation that, you know, that could be addressed when, if, if it were to occur. The 273, those, the provision, the broad provisions were removed from the previous version for 273 here, and I think that's something that the Commission can consider and perhaps address at a later date. Essentially, it's, it's something that we could look into and see what other options we could provide to the Commission on that, but it would just not be on the ballot for the next election for, for the voters to consider.
Okay, could we amend it and add it tonight if we decided we wanted to?
You definitely could.
Or we have to put it out for another meeting?
You definitely could amend it tonight, but I didn't have anything prepared for tonight specifically.
I, I just have a feeling we just need to look into that, just to make sure that I, we get representation for the people, they're not getting held up to get a replacement in those spots, for those, just those certain circumstances that come awry.
Yeah, I would be happy to draft up something for the Commission to consider at a future date, if, if that's what the Commission desires, basically.
Thank you. Everything else looks, looks fine. I mean, we're going to leave it up to the voters to decide what they want anyway, so if, if this is what we got for right now, I'm all for this currently, we can discuss the changes later.
Commissioner Simmons, thank you. Commissioner Patrick O'Donnell.
While I do agree with Commissioner O'Donnell that that could be a problem, I can't think of a time in recent history that has the problem we've even faced on this Commission. So I know Detroit, when Quanamie Kilpatrick was convicted of a felony, and he wound up resigning, so they didn't even have to go to the, I think they were going to go to the Governor, and, and he saw the writing on the wall, so if it were happening every term, yeah, let's address it, but I'm just, I just don't see the need to address that. I did make some comments at the last meeting about two-year versus four-year, and I would have probably never initiated this in the first place, but now that I've thought about it, I, I do like the merit of having some more consistency for four years. When Commissioners come on, in this term, we've not even had a strategic planning session for all of the, the new Commissioners. I haven't attended one in the last six years, so I, I think that would allow for more goal-setting, strategic planning as a body, and make us more productive. As far as term limits, the voting is, is a term limit. I disagree with them at the state level, federal, they passed them back in the 90s, and the Supreme Court overturned that as unconstitutional. So I think voting is our ultimate term limit. The only thing I'm a little disturbed about is we moved our city commission elections from odd-numbered years back in 2017 to even-numbered years, to increase voter turnout from single digits to now in, in conjunction with either presidential or gubernatorial action years, and we're talking about putting this on the ballot in May? Is that, yeah, which, we're going to get a really low turnout. I mean, just, that's going to be the only thing that's on the ballot, so we're going to probably get low, single digits of people that show up on this. But ultimately, it is up to this, would be up to the citizens, so I'm going to support this tonight, glad we took out the provisions for the, the discipline, and I really enjoyed the conversation. I think it's, it's some important things that we're talking about as far as making us more effective bodies, so, but ultimately, it's up to the voters. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Any other, Commissioner Morris and Commissioner Lacoste?
Thank you. I just wanted to thank everyone for their comments. I received a lot of phone calls and texts myself, and they are on opposite ends of the spectrum, so I think that this would be something that's really great for the voters to make their own decision on. I think that there is value in four-year terms as well as there's value in two-year terms, so I just would like to see this go to the constituents for a vote.
Thank you, Commissioner Morris. Commissioner Lacoste?
I just wanted to mirror what they had said, you know, that this is just us putting it out there for the voters to decide. It's not us deciding, it's just to give everyone a chance to have their voice heard. Being a newly-elected official, I think there is some advantages to being, you know, there for four years. The first couple of years, you're really in there getting your feet wet and getting, you know, to understand the ins and outs of everything, meeting with all the department heads. I've been taking every possible course I possibly can to serve the public as best as I possibly can. So that takes up a lot of those first couple of years. So also, the strategic planning, I think is very important for every Commission to be a part of going forward, but again, it's up to the public. Also, pretty much every city this size has four-year terms. We would be, you know, kind of in cohesiveness with them, so.
Thank you, Commissioner. Are we prepared to vote? Okay, let's vote on Resolution 273.
She's got the, she's, she's got the old version of the software on her screen.
Commissioner Reynolds and Commissioner Lance.
I vote yes, it doesn't show up on my thing.
Okay.
I will yes, too. I'd love.
Okay.
I will recall that.
If I could, Mayor, I maybe suggest that the, that the Clerk do a roll call vote.
Okay.
But the system is janky right now.
Our attorney is requesting a roll call.
Yes.
Commissioner Morris?
Yes.
Mayor Banky?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Yes.
Commissioner Reynolds?
Yes.
Commissioner Simmons?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Sophia?
Yes.
And Commissioner Lacoste?
Yes.
Resolution 273 has been approved. Next item on our general, general public comment, if you'd like to make general public comment regarding matters over which the City Commission has control, please raise your hand and wait for us to acknowledge you to come forward to the podium. You'll have three minutes to make your comment. Please state your name and address prior to beginning your comment. Now, to those Youth Challenge Academy guys, I heard you get extra credit if you come up here and make a comment.
No, they're saying. I'll give you extra credit if you don't.
At the same time, if one of you wants to come up and speak for the entire group, I will allow that. Who's going to come up? Come on.
We, we want to hear what you're here for. Good job. Thank you very much.
Welcome to Battle Creek.
My name is Cadet Seigel. I come from Michigan Youth Challenge Academy, and I used to live in Holly, Michigan, but this is my first time going to a city council meeting, so fire my nerves.
You're doing a great job.
Thank you, sir.
Yeah, three minutes to go.
Appreciate it. You made a lot of excellent points, and I really appreciate the way this is running, too. As a member of the Michigan Youth Challenge Academy Student Council, we really had some trouble running our personal council, so it's really a great example to lead by watching the, excuse me, the city council.
Sure.
The four-year term seems like a great idea, I mean, just to get that long running in. I know Richardson, one of our president, would love to be four years in the running, but, you know, as of right now, we only have about three weeks left till we graduate, and I was really glad to see how a professionally council was run. I appreciate you guys, thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Make sure you thank everyone, we appreciate it. All right, do we have any other public comment tonight? Yes, David. Then we'll go over to Mary, and then we'll go back to the Affordable Water Organization. David, you're first, and we'll go to Mary, and then Sylvia.
I'd like to comment a little more on this 273. Number one, we don't have term limits, I know of. We're going to say a Commission gets selected in, he gets, can keep running and running until whatever, pretty lucid, I guess. And remember, we're putting somebody, voting for somebody for four years. A person can do a lot of damage in four years. You get a guy, person, whoever they are, and you don't like them, you're stuck with them, that's it. So I think it's, we, have we had any problems the way we've been doing it? I wonder if we really had. I think what we've been doing this two terms has been going pretty well. I don't know why we really want to go a four-term. It's, I think it's, I like this two-year term. I think it should stay right there.
Thank you, David. Mary?
Hi there, Commissioners, and I'm not talking about 273 again. What I like to talk about is accounts payable, one of my favorite subjects. I understand that we have campaign, political campaign debts from 2016. Yes, we do, don't we, Mayor? And he's smiling at me because we've discussed this. I think it's very sad that we have these debts, and I do not think we should allow any more politicians to campaign in our city if their party owes us money from 2016. We have had 2018, 2020, 2022, and 2024. We can't keep collecting debt for every two-year campaigns. They need to pay ahead. They have to pay the debt they have now. If you're Republican, we have Republican debt, you ain't campaigning until that debt's paid. I don't care who owed it. You a Democrat, Democrats owe us, you ain't campaigning until they pay it. In the future, all campaigns will be prepaid. We can't subsidize these clowns. They vote themselves big tax breaks, and then they don't pay their campaign bills, and we have to pay them. That might be annoying, and you asked me for donations! Ahhh! I'm sorry.
Okay. All right, I said Sylvia, we're going to go Sylvia, then George, Joe, excuse me. Sylvia?
How many, how many left here? I got a couple others.
All right, we got to take one at a time, so they can come up and sit with you, but one at a time. There's a basket right there. You put them in the basket, then someone will pick them up.
Thank you, Mayor Banky, Vice Mayor Sophia, and Commissioners and staff. My name is Sylvia Ordunio. I am a Detroit resident, but I work statewide in a grassroots organization with residents that are trying to figure out how we can get affordable bills at the local level. You all do valiant work, trying to operate, maintain, fix infrastructure for water systems, and it's very much a local responsibility. But what we're finding across the state is that residents that are within your municipalities cannot afford the bills as the costs keep going up and up. We've tried working with many cities that are trying to figure out, well, maybe we can create an affordable program where residents can apply for assistance, and that did happen during the pandemic. There were funds that were available through the federal government. Those funds are gone. There is no funds right now either through the state government except for a small $5 million that was appropriated by the legislature this last budget round. We need a way, though, for residents to be able to pay for the cost of keeping their water service going, because there are residents across the state who are shut off because they cannot afford to pay, or because their water bills will go on to the property taxes, thereby jeopardizing the very housing that they worked very hard to have. Tenants are also being forced into paying for water bills that landlords used to cover, and there's a lot of unethical things that are going on in some of those arrangements. We're asking you to please support a resolution for a state Senate bill, water affordability package. It would be comparable to what energy companies are already getting to assist their customers who need help. There's no such thing for local governments or local water customers. This would create a new state program, and all customers throughout the state, cities and townships, would be eligible to apply. You could have your customers apply for that program, or you could administer your own. The legislation offers flexibility in how it would be operated, and so what we need is your support. In fact, for what it's worth, Jackson, just now, I just learned, passed a resolution supporting statewide water affordability legislation. We're looking at cities all over the state to do this, and we're going around to city governments, asking for your support. In fact, I love, local government meetings are the best. This is really the heart of America, and so I appreciate what you're doing. I ask you to please take a look at what we have here in the packet. It's got a summary of the legislation and a letter that I'd like to submit to, and asking for your support. And so I'm happy to answer any questions after the meeting as well. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Sylvia. And would you like to speak next?
Yes. Hello, my name is Roston Walker, and I appreciate you all for allowing me to provide public comments to you about water affordability. Two weeks ago, I met with several residents on Helen Montgomery Avenue Street who talked about how hard it is to keep up with the cost of water bills. Some of them are here tonight. They are seniors, parents with young children and young adults just trying to work and survive. We all need, what we all need is a way for our families to pay water bills, sanitation, sorry about that, you guys, sanitation and stormwater bills they can't afford. We all ask that you pass a Commissionary Resolution in support of statewide water affordability. Thank you all.
Thank you very much. Young man?
Good evening. My name's Alton McIntyre, I'm from the city of Detroit as well. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, council members, Commissioners. Although I'm a city resident, I've been fighting for clean and affordable water since 2015. I've been to Eastland, I mean, East Point, I've been to Detroit all my life, born and raised, Groves Point, and throughout. I just left Jackson meeting last week where we talked with the mayor and their council about adopting a resolution for clean and affordable water for all Michiganders. I've been all the way to Lansing, I've talked with state representatives, and supported Stephanie Chang in her effort to get this resolution passed, and where water can be affordable for all residents, no matter where you live at, where we're all Michiganders and we all are surrounded by the same body of water, which supports our land, our homes, our lifestyle, period. Because as you read, as you can see in your Bibles and everywhere else, it tells you that without water, you cannot live, you cannot survive, won't nothing grow. So I'm asking you, as a city council, as the mayor, here, please support our Water Affordability Act and Water Affordability Bill.
Thank you very much for your comments. Okay, Joe?
Joe Harris, 243 Eldred. In regard to what was spoken earlier, in regard to Commission discipline, I don't, I don't know if it's a matter of legality as much as already the legal process is there, set specifically MCL 168.327, which that gives the process in which to get, to get the information up to the Governor for consideration of a Commission recall. I think, my opinion, what needs to happen is, the Commission as a whole needs to adopt some kind of a policy or a process in which if, God forbid, any type of situation were to happen, that they have a process to follow in regard to getting all the information up to the Governor. So I'm kind of thinking of it as an impeachment process, and I mentioned this before, so it's just, it's like, if, for example, you have a Commissioner that's accused of some kind of misconduct, there's a call for an investigation, investigation occurs, evidence is given, Commission votes on it whether or not to send the evidence to the Governor, and so that's just an example, it doesn't have to be that way, but it's just an example of what could be done. So I think it's more of a Commission process that needs to be established so as to get that up to the Governor, so that process can be followed. In regard to the, the terms, something I didn't mention last time, is that, you know, there is also a process for citizens that to, to recall Commissioners. It's there. It's also in government statute. And so if there's a situation in which citizens don't appreciate what the Commissioner's doing or how they're representing, there is a process to follow for that recall, and that recall can go on the ballot. So there, there are things in place, so as, like a checks and balances, to make sure that that happens, so just wanted to mention those two things. And real quick, on the, on the DDA, my biggest concern is in regard to the capture of certain of those, those funds, and the last I read, correct me if I'm wrong, is around 35% of a certain area are going to have funds that are captured from, from the Battle Creek taxes and so on and so forth. And so my question is, 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 who's going to make up for the shortfall, if there is a shortfall, which I think there will be, because you have 35% less from that area, so I, I just am trying to get that in, in my brain and where the shortfall is going to, to come from. But I thank you for your time, you guys have a great Thanksgiving. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Yes, Kathy Anteau?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Kathy Antea, Park Ridge Drive. For the last several months, I have been regaling you with information regarding Share Center, the gem of Battle Creek, one of our most important assets for the entire community. And the Share Center's recent November 6th share-for-share fundraiser was extremely successful. It raised about $30,000 in one evening. So, yeah. Yeah. We were super excited by that. We had a fabulous time. It was really a lot of fun. Share was glamorous and gorgeous. Lots of people got photos taken with her, so it was wonderful. And the fundraising is still going on. We still are happy to accept donations. You can go online, sharecenterbc.org is our website, and you can make a donation. What we'd really love to have folks do is do a monthly donation... oh, yeah. Do a monthly donation. Commit to doing that every month. We would love to have folks do that. In addition, I am the volunteer coordinator, and I have lots of opportunities for volunteers. We need people to serve meals. We need groups to come in and cook and prepare the meals. If you like sorting and organizing things, I have lots of that work to do. Cleaning, if you like deep cleaning, oh, boy, you can come on the third Sunday of every month, and I have a deep cleaning session at the Share Center as well. And on December 10th, the Friends of the Share Center, which is kind of a loose group, we were the ones that helped organize the fundraiser, the Friends of the Share Center are having meetup... I hate to call it a meet and greet because that's so overused, but essentially, we're having a bunch of folks get together just to shoot the breeze. Noshies are on me. This will be held at Uproot Eatery Restaurant... wait. Market and Eatery, that's it. Uproot Market and Eatery, the new green grocer downtown. That'll be December 10th from 4:30 to 6:30 p.m. Again, munchies are on me. Come on down. Come talk to us. We'll have all kinds of clipboards where you can sign up for a variety of volunteer tasks. And if nothing else, you can come to the Share Center on any given day and play cards, and that would be very much appreciated as well. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Kathy. Any other public comment? Reese?
Good evening. Reese Atkins, 84 South 23rd Street. This is something that's been on my mind for a little bit, and I've been really trying to do some research in it. And please don't take this the wrong way. I support Safe Place 100%. But what I'm seeing is Safe Places for females with... for domestic violence, which, yeah, there's a lot of it. But what I don't see is when a male individual is abused by the female, no place for him to go to get help, no place for him to go to recover, to get counseling or anything like that. They're basically just shoved off the round. I'm seeing a lot of progress of wanting to build things and build stuff like that. Let's be... Battle Creek be the first one to build a place where male people who have been abused domestic-wise or by parents or anything like that, to where they can go to get the help like women do, and I support that. But let's have something where the males can go and get the support and get the help. I went down Saturday to the school that was being redone, that was being toured because it's being tore down. Perfect spot. I mean, that school's not that bad, you know, or even the property to build something like that. Let's have Battle Creek be the first town, the first city to have something like that where the males can get the same assistance that the females can get. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Any other public comments at this time? Any other public comments? Joe Ziegler.
Joe Ziegler, Battle Creek, Michigan. I have a very important request from the commission and the mayor. The Battle Creek Public Schools made a gut-wrenching decision. The citizens of this town in 1926 gave their hard-earned money, over $800,000, to build that architectural gem, and it must not be destroyed. Today's money, that's $16.4 million. So you think, well, what can the commissioners do? Why am I coming to you? Because without a flourishing school system, Battle Creek cannot flourish. Plus, this is an economic opportunity. For example, the Historic Youth Building. I feel a little like Bill Murray in Groundhog Day. I've been through this before, and we know that historic buildings are valuable and can become a resource. There are over 29 low-income housing units in the Historic Youth Building, and we have a housing problem now. Maybe that's the reason for it. But in any case, what's needed is it's not the city's building. The school gets to do what they want with it. And so I'm asking you to show vision and leadership and take charge, have courage. And I'm asking you to make a motion during city commission comments to the effect of directing the city attorney to begin drafting a tentative contract to help negotiate with the city schools and to ask the city manager or her staff to reach out to the city schools and tell them that we're here to help them, to show the good faith that when the citizens of this community give the equivalent of $16.4 million, that their investment will be respected. And over the years, there has not been the best relationship between the city and the schools. And this is a win-win. You'll be able to help develop that relationship. So with that said, I guess you'll need some sort of tentative motion to make, which is what I've said, to direct the... And maybe the schools will donate what they were going to pay for destruction towards what's needed to stabilize the building and mothball it and make it presentable and something a developer could consider investing money in. This is a great opportunity. Milton is another prime example. You get asbestos abated and other things that don't make it economic sense for a developer, and I believe we'll have many people wanting to present ideas.
Joe, thank you for your comments, and it'll be up to the commission to make...
Okay. And if I... you have any questions or information, I'll stand by.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Any other public comments? See, none commission comments? Commissioner Patrick O'Donnell?
Thanks, Mayor. Thank you for the Youth Challenge Academy for coming out tonight. I know they have to leave because of the time constraints that they have with their program out there, but I really...
Got to get up 5:00 a.m. to run three miles.
I can't even think three miles, so... They're way ahead of me. This weekend, great events downtown. Please attend the Holiday Parade and the lights down there. Please, everybody enjoy that down there. We've got two new facilities that have opened downtown. I hope people go down there and check it out. But I did have a question for the city manager. We did have that walkway sign. It was removed downtown for yielding for pedestrians. And I was even down there to town the other day, and it was gone. And I was trying to walk to one of the new places, and the traffic was really bad, like they didn't even see me. So if we can look into finding out what it takes place to make sure people know to yield to people trying to cross the street, I mean, just because the sign's not there, it's still state law. So if you could look into that.
I'll look into that.
And one other thing, I had a couple visitors come up to me and ask me how the missing statue is doing at Irving Park, if we could get another report of... because the pedestal's there, but nothing's there, so...
Okay.
Yeah. So, thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you, Commissioner Patrick O'Donnell. Any other commission comments at this time? Commissioner Reynolds? And then, I see a hand up down there. Commissioner Simmons.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to put on record the reason for my absence of the last commission meeting. I had a leadership meeting with my employer, so that is why I was not able to attend. So I just want that written in the record.
You were noticeably absent. We missed you. Thank you.
Thanks for mentioning the Youth Challenge Academy. I think the comments from the young man actually just made my day, and his comments about... it's a great program. Southwestern Junior High, I had opportunity to tour that. My wife was a student in the junior high there, late 80s, and she wanted to go back, and I'm glad we did. We had a housing workshop a little earlier tonight before this meeting, and I actually talked about that, like, what could we possibly do with that site for housing? I know the housing commission's staff, consultants, architects, they've walked through there. It will be a challenge to remodel that, but we certainly had that conversation. I wanted to mention something that the mayor and I actually had the honor to attend last week. A young lady from Lakeview High School, she's a senior there, Josie Polowitz, as her Girl Scout project, put together a flag donation box or retired... flag retirement box, and it's sitting over the police station next door. And actually, I got to put a couple of flags in it and initiate it. But thank Josie for doing that. And if you have flags that are... should be properly disposed of and retired, that asset is there, and they will... they'll be properly through the American Legion, I believe, or some other organization that properly disposes of them. So I just want to acknowledge that. Great job, Josie. Thank you.
Thank you. Vice Mayor, did you have a... okay, no. On this side, any comments? I would like to say, Joe, we will get back to you. We will talk our city attorney and our city manager, and as a commission, we'll respond. Are there any other comments by the commission? If not, we're adjourned. Thank you for attending this nice meeting.